Ladies and gentlemen, my call is meeting the order today for our October 13, 2022 board meeting. Welcome everybody here today that's in the courtroom and anybody that's in the virtual world. First thing on our agenda today is invocation and Pastor Lee Farmer, would you be so kind?
Do have an opportunity to offer a prayer at your behalf. Father God, thank you for the blessings we have living in such a wonderful community. Thank you for opportunities of service and we thank you for our Board of Supervisors who've been chosen by the people to conduct our county's business. As they go through this tonight-
Father, I pray that you will give them wisdom and mercy as they conduct this business. In the name of your name, I pray, amen.
Thank you, sir. All right, pledge of allegiance, we all stand to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next is the approval of agenda, of the agenda. Do we have any deletions or corrections to the agenda or additions? If not, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All right, got a motion to second, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, approval of the amendments. We have September the first, 2022, regular board member minutes. Are there any changes or changes to the minutes? If not, can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
All right, have a motion to second, any other changes? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, presentations. We have a presentation from the Virginia Law Enforcement Professional Standards Commission. Anyone here from the commission yet?
Mr. Chairman, they're not, they're not here yet. If we can move that down on the-
All right, we'll just move it on down. All right, our next item on the agenda is Davenport Emergency Radio Funding Options.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. How you do, sir?
I'm good. My young colleague is going to pass out some books and-
All right.
All right. While he's doing that, this is Austin Sachs and Austin has been with me about a year and a half. Some of y'all may have seen and know my other colleague Kyle, who's not here tonight. Kyle's now part of about 22 years with us, so he's a lot younger than that. I try not to make these fellows look too old too soon, that's my goal. So again, I'm David Rose and appreciate being in front of y'all once again. We're not asking, Mr. Chairman, for any actions. This is meant solely for education purposes and by all means, I won't be very long, but feel free to just stop me as I'm going through this presentation. So on that first page, page two, the background, I think all of you should recognize that we've had the good fortune of serving as financial advisor to the county for many years now and actually have done some work. I go back to the days when John was with us and of course Kenny. So it's nice to be here with Luttrell and his new assistant. That said, one of our jobs is to report to you and to provide you some insights particularly around capital projects and debt and your ratings and other things like that. I will say for the benefit of those behind me, the county is in very solid financial shape and probably in the best shape it's been in all the years that I can recall. So that's a big statement coming through COVID. I think I was here during COVID, so I'll be all wearing some masks and I can't even remember anymore what I was here for, but I remember doing that. So we're here tonight, though, about the E911 radio system and the funding about that. So again, on page three, just a few things about goals and objectives. I basically put them into three different points. First is to give you a sense of the strong financial position that I mentioned and you're going to see in a couple of minutes, some of the comparatives of where you are today versus the last time we had to do some work for the radio system. It's hard to believe. The second is to touch upon the plan of finance for the radio system and to make sure that we ultimately find some recurring revenues for that. I will tell you that there is no expectation of any debt service in this fiscal year, which of course goes through next June 30th. We're not going to need anything, even if we move forward sometime in the new calendar year, which is sort of what we're thinking about with you and your staff. And then lastly, there'll be some funding approaches. We're going to hone in on that a little bit later. So with that said, I'll go to page four. We have what we call the E911 then and now. It's hard to believe that back in 2012, we were looking at doing some radio system improvements. The cost was a million dollars then. Today, we're estimating worst case around five and a half million dollars. So you see the inflation and the requirements. But the important thing is number one, you were able to pay cash for that improvement back then, if you recall. We did some borrowings on a number of things, but you were able to pay cash. Today, that's not feasible. There's just too large a number relative to the funds that we have. The other good points, though, is that back then, this was after having done the school, we had almost, almost $40 million of debt outstanding. Today, we have less than 30 million of debt outstanding. So while the budget's gone up and things have evolved, our debt profile today is 25% lower than it was back in 2012. The second point there is we have an unassigned fund balance. Then it was about $8 million. Today, it's about $9 million. So that's gone up a little bit, but we compare it to the overall expenditures. Then it was a very healthy 30%. Today, it's still a healthy buzz, basically 25%. So we like to see that number, we like to see that range. You've been growing that and that's important because I think it's going to help with the overall ratings of the county. The ratings are strong, we think they may even get stronger by virtue of where you are. Lastly, your overall budget back then, just think of it this way, your debt back then was 39, almost $40 million and your school budget with the county was about 27 million. So that debt was larger than the budget was. Today, the debt is under 30 million and your overall budget's over 35 million. So that balance, if you would, is a lot stronger today than it was a decade ago. All right, page five is just the trend of your fund balance. One of the things Austin did for me, brought a presentation that I think I may have made a year or so ago, was it, was that about a year ago? And we showed, we dipped down to a low point a number of years ago when that fund balance got as low as three and a half million dollars. And that's when the rating agencies dinged us for that. And since you've gone the opposite way, which is good, and again, you're now roughly at 25%. And so we just wanted you to see how that looks for everybody in the audience. On page six, we compared you to our peers in the region and you're right there at the peer group median. So that's a good way of knowing that you're in good shape and you're very much in line with your neighbors. King and queen is an outlier, an acrobat on the other side as well. So let's go to page seven, if I could. We did some numbers for you. While we think five and a half million sounds like it's on the high end, we nevertheless ran the project all in at $6 million. It's not us recommending that, it's rather trying to give you some cushion. Whatever it is, it'll be, whatever those actual numbers will be, it'll be. That's something we don't control. We did run this as if the interest rate to borrow is a fixed rate of 5% and we looked at repaying it as short as 10 years and as long as 15 years, either of which are a rapid repayment. So we wanted you to see what the impacts were of all of that. So on page eight, for those of you who we got used to last couple of years, interest rates being very, very strong, you could see on the left-hand side, I went back to 1980, roughly about the time I started in this business. And you can see there that interest rates, the fixed rate was upwards of nearly 14%. Today, that fixed rate is 4%, but literally a year and a half ago, it was as low as two and a half percent, a little over 2%. So we've just come off the bottom of been, which has been as good as it's been in 50 years, but we're still relatively speaking, when you look back on 40 years, we're still in that low range over 40 years. So rates are favorable, nevertheless, we ran it at 5%. That may not be enough when we ultimately do the financing, but at least we have some cushion that we built in right now for this. Okay, on page nine, what we wanted you to see is your current debt and then we added to your current debt on a 10-year repayment, very quick repayment, what your overall ratios look like. These ratios are ratios that credit analysts look at, that the rating agencies look at. We just wanted to give you a sense of where you are. This first one is called debt to assessed value. That's a fancy way of saying how much debt outstanding, that roughly, as I mentioned, 30 million plus this new debt, which let's say it's 6 million, so roughly 35, 36 million. And it compares to the overall value of the county. And what you can see here is you're just a little bit over 1%. That puts you right there between the very strong and strong ratios for, for the county. So that is a very good number, a very good situation to be in. Then, if we take a look at on page 10, your peers, you could see that is just a little bit above your peers. That's because we've already added in this borrowing. So we factored that in and you could see there, you're a little bit above the peer median, but on the right-hand side, very much in the thick of what everybody is above and below. So again, we feel good about this ratio and what you look like. And then the next ratio on page 11 is what I'll call your credit card, debt service to expenditures. Think of it this way, for every dollar that the county has in its budget, how many pennies or what percent of that dollar goes to debt service? So you think about it, for those citizens behind us, if you're fortunate, let's say to own a home and you have a mortgage, you typically want to stay about 25% of your income, of your monthly income going to debt service if possible for your mortgage. You, on the other hand, even with this debt added, never go more than about eight cents or 8% of your budget. That's with the new debt added in, if it was paid back as fast as 10 years. So if it's paid back over 15 years, it's going to stay under 8%. That's considered by the rating folks, the highest category, very strong. So again, they're saying that you as a county, even with this debt, if it's brought on at that level, is still looked at very strongly because your overall debt portfolio with this in there is considered, again, very, very competitive relative to national averages. And then you see on page 12, we then add this in and you can see that in the area that we live in here, in a very conservative area from debt, if the peer group's about a little over 5% where you are right now, when we add this in, even paying it as quickly as 10 years, we're basically just a little over 6%. So we're way under that 8%, a little over 6%. It's a fancy way of saying that you're in very good shape, you'll be in good shape. So that all leads to page 13 and I mentioned finding revenue sources. What we did on the left-hand side is just to show you if it gets paid over 10 years, what the impacts will be and the equivalent impacts and on the right-hand side, if it's paid out over 15 years. And with 5% over 15 years, we need the equivalent, very bottom here, in 2024, when you do your budget, we need to figure out one way or another to come up with the equivalent of one penny. That's what we need to take care of this and then we need another penny in 2025. So from your perspective, the challenge that Luttrell and all of us will have is, okay, just making sure we fit in the equivalent of one penny next year for the debt service, assuming we move forward on a project of this size over that type of timeframe. So lastly, next steps, as I said, this is meant to be educational, here to answer any questions. You know, I can't give you the answer, I'll find it for you or try to, but we wanted to get the ball rolling and thinking about funding and the relative magnitude of that. Try to get some of your feedback and thoughts over the next month or two and then, as we move into the new calendar year after January, really start to talk seriously about ways to actually raise that money. As you know, your colleague coming from Essex Bank and we know well, those are the types of banks that will be very interested because of the way you look financially, the way you pay your bills back, you know, we know there's going to be interest by the banks. We know the state has several programs we've used in the past, VRA, Junior Resource Authority. And as your advisor, we're indifferent. All we care about is that we put it out in such a way that we get you the best cost of money, the most flexible cost of money, and that's our way of looking at all this. So happy to answer any questions and again, always nice to be back. So thank you.
All right, any board members have any questions?
VRA, what's the mechanics for applying for that and receiving that?
So the VRA, the mechanics are basically, now with interest rates up, they're basically back to twice a year borrowings. They do pool program, Mr. Tomlin. So when I said, thinking about it in earnest after the new calendar year, we probably have to have an application in about February 1, give or take. And then they typically do their bond sale about April 15th, April 20th, in that timeframe, usually around May 1st. So the idea would be, we would actually have money in hand, let's say mid to late May. Now, if we don't know at that point, by that period of time, exactly what we need, a lot of times, we might say is, okay, if we know worst case, that if the project's estimated at five and a half million, we would probably suggest something like, maybe we borrow 5 million. That way, we're never going to borrow more than we need, but if we have a little bit of shortfall, frankly, depending, and this is where I need some guidance from Luttrell and all budgeting, y'all have done such a good job of building your fund balance, we might use some of the cash, if we could, to pay the difference, let's say, within reason, you know, down the road. The other thing about this too, as you think about it, the radio system, chances are it's going to get paid down, I mean, the borrowing, very quickly. So we want to make sure that as we think about what we might need and when we might need, what surprises, we'll make sure that, again, that borrowing, if we go through VRA, is done just quite right. So that's, that's where we stand.
I'm standing fine. Now, what is the process legally for the county to do to get there?
Okay, okay. So typically, the process is we would put an application together. You would have to, as a board, request going to funding formally. There's no, there's, most likely a public hearing is going to be involved, but we would then have the application and then VRA is the actual borrower. Unlike sometimes, we've done some things that you were, let's say, the EDA, IDA kind of thing, depending on which county is the borrower legally, is the pastor, we've done that. Here, it'd be VRA, they would be the actual borrower of the bonds. So from that process, they would require from you a resolution, that would be done, Eric could put that together. At that point, we're going to be interviewed, I'll call it, by VRA and look at our financials. We feel very good about that because of where you've come, what you've done, we're not worried about VRA. Because VRA is not a rubber stamp, they don't have to approve a local government, but we're not worried about that. And so typically, what they'll want, though, is to discuss some type of security feature for the radio system.
I don't blame them.
Yes, exactly. So that'll be a discussion as to what do they, are they good with the radio equipment? They want some other physical hard asset? So that's kind of the discussions that we're going to have. As I said, that's also part of comparing them to, let's say, a direct bank loan. One of the things about VRA is that they typically have what we call a 10-year lockout. Well, again, we do 10-year financing, it's not going to matter, more than likely preliminarily, I'm probably more of the ilk of a 15-year. You could always pay it faster, but I do like the idea that we don't put overburden on you. And the system should last that 15 years, but that's the kind of stuff that Luttrell and Eric and all can say, we know what, we like it maybe in between 10 and 15 years, we can make that decision down the road, that's easy. So that's really the, the process then is assuming they say yes to you, which we expect, and that would probably occur by late February, maybe about March 1st. Then we have the ability to pull out of that within about, don't call me too, maybe two, three weeks before the actual sale, which would be in April. And we have the opportunity to adjust it upward or downward that time as well for them, if we know some more about the cost. That's pretty much how it works for them. What we'll probably think about, and we've done this with you in the past, is what we call dual tracking. We would probably say, you know what, while we're applying to VRA and they understand this, let's ask the banks what they could do. And the good news there is the banks historically will come back and give us a fixed rate, if you recall, so we can all say to you, we know with certainty that if you approve this for the next 30 days, which is never a problem, we're going to have this interest rate, let's say. Or do we want to wait another two months and see what VRA might be? So we'll, we'll be able to discuss that with you. If you recall, the banks don't penalize us if we don't use them. They'll give us, they don't, they don't charge us. And VRA also does not charge us if we don't use them ultimately. They don't say there's a, there's an application fee or something. They used to do that years ago, they got away from that. So I think we get the opportunity to say, this is a strong county, we're in good shape, a lot of steady situation, see what people might be willing to do. Won't be the 2% range like it was, sorry, you know, but it's still, relatively speaking, should be very solid.
What about voter approved general obligation? Can that be done concurrent with your plans there?
It cannot. Basically, and this, I'll speak, I shouldn't for your judge, but it takes a while, as you know, to get set up for a referendum. I would caution, though, a referendum for an essential service project because here's the thing, you have really no choice. You have to do radio, as I understand it, I'm not your engineer. But if that's the case, since that's the case, not but, since that's the case, if indeed the voters don't realize it's a central function, it's not, you know, like a Parks and Rec or even a school, then the state, the VRA, will not be there as a funding option. They will, they will basically say, we're not going to provide the money. The banks will most likely be very, very hesitant and reticent or they may charge a penalty interest rate or require some things of you that are very onerous. Because again, they don't want to be viewed as going against the will of, of the, and I don't think y'all, you don't want to do that either as a board, but this is, you know, in my experience working on a lot of your daubers, I don't know of, you may know of one, I mean, as I was saying to Luttrell and Eric, I really don't know of another county that's done a referendum for E911. It's just an essential function, it's not something we say.
Well, my little, I've got constrained by the Virginia Constitution on long-term debt, section 10. That's my concern. We can get around, I don't have a problem, but it needs to be, make sure the public knows what's going on and approves it.
So I think we could do that. Eric, go ahead.
If I may, Mr. Chairman. This, this borrowing would not be constrained by that constitutional provision. The process for a borrowing like this would typically be put before the public via a public hearing conducted by the Board of Supervisors. So that's the opportunity for the public to comment. So it's, there is that process available and you would exercise that process. As, as Mr. Rose mentioned, generally, a referendum that you're, that you're talking about for general obligation borrowing would be for nice to haves, right? Like libraries, Parks and Rec projects, other public amenities. That's typically what you see referendums for. And in fact, in Reaco County is about to hold one this fall for a number of things which are considered nice to haves. Those are all park projects, I think there's some school projects, some other, some other nice to haves, you might say. This is a must-have. This is not something that the county has an option about, you know, this is not a nice to have, this is an essential function, as Mr. Rose mentioned. I would not recommend going to the referendum process.
Constitutionally on solid ground, as we've been preached about further constitutional amendments, I want to make sure we're straight on that.
I understand. I don't know about those other ones, but on this, on this borrowing-
First and second.
Right, on this borrowing, you'd be fine.
And to add to what Mr. Gregory said, also, Mr. Chairman, not only do we get the opinions of, that the county attorney's a part of this, but we have bond counsel. You have bond counsel. It's your, it's your legal experts in Virginia bond law and they will sign and attest that you are borrowing constitutionally. So we've got more than just some lender or us as financial advisor, you know, what we think is not important. What's important is the, is your legal counsel. So you really have two of them coming at it, so that will happen.
I didn't know this, the county did a referendum on school.
Yeah, and that's different. I mean, because, and it's also different because VPSA, they will turn around and say, okay, let's assume that you had a $50 million referendum for a school a certain way, they will then allow you to make changes. And if they think the changes are significant enough, they will come forward and be willing, we represent VPSA, they'll be willing to do that. So then you have that option. But here, we don't really have an option. It's either the radio system or not and it's your central function and it's, you know, emergency required. So it's so different than, you know, I think you understand my, so.
All right, any other board members have questions?
So realistically, what is the quickest you could move, could be moved forward?
So the quickest we could move forward, and you jumped in, Luttrell, but it is, we could move forward, once you feel comfortable that you've got a size that makes sense to you. Then we could go directly to banks and do that and that can happen in a faster process. But again, I would defer to you in terms of what you're comfortable in terms of.
Yeah, well, I think also, we need to have further discussions as far as how the board wants to proceed for it too. We've also been looking at what Lancaster County is going to be doing because that is going to impact whether it's a regional project or not, not a regional project as far as sharing equipment. And it's my understanding that they've moved forward in signing with federal engineering to study that contract with Harris Radio. I think that's what has recently happened, so.
Jason, could you clarify what Lancaster did?
That's what we did, we voted on that in the last meeting.
Just to go forward with federal engineering to review the system?
Yeah, but we also voted on the funding.
Okay, so you're going forward with, okay. I just wanted to clarify exactly, I saw the advertising going, but I wasn't sure how far you were going. It was good.
The, the numbers that we were discussing were worst-case scenario.
Well, I know, we've got a plan for worst-case. And in worst-case, if we ask for this, could we then drop down?
We can do that, yes, sir, absolutely. And I think, I think the public hearing usually is a, is a worst-case amount and then you do the, you do-
Yes, sir.
That's how it works, yeah. Can't go above it, right.
Anyone else have any questions?
No.
Anything else, Mark? No, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. There, yes, sir. All right, just hit that a little bit. All right, our next item would be Virginia Law Enforcement Professionals, Professional Standards Commission. Anyone here from that?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, fellow board members. So sorry I'm, I'm late. I had a meeting in Richmond that ran a little bit over, so I apologize for taking up your precious time. I know you have a lot of, a lot of business to attend to. I'm Sheriff C.O. Balderson, I'm just up the road from you here in Westmoreland. That's a lot closer coming that way than it was coming from Richmond, so again, I apologize. But I just wanted to say, as a chairman of the Virginia Law Enforcement Professional Standards Commission, it's a great honor for me to come before you tonight to celebrate the success or the accomplishment of your sheriff, Sheriff Beecham in the Northumberland County Sheriff's Office for their initial accreditation through the commission. I'll just give you a brief, a little bit brief information about the commission. It's a certainly not a program that's for a rubber stamp. What they've done, they earned. Well, I'm not giving it to them. This sheriff, his personnel, this sheriff's office, they earned every bit of it. And I'm so proud to congratulate him for that honor. I will say, it's 191 standards that these folks work on for four years, accumulating, accumulating, documenting, documenting, that shows the, the integrity, the transparency, the accountability of an agency. And I'm certainly thankful that through his efforts, through his efforts of his two accreditation managers, Doc Lyons and now Greg Keizer, they have really worked hard to accomplish this. It's, again, it's not a rubber stamp program. It's hard, it's, it's hard to get it initially, but I'll say it's just as hard, if not harder, to maintain it. Out of those 191 standards, there are actually four categories. It's personnel, training, administration, and the other one is, help me, operations. So thank you all that. But again, it's such an honor for me to come down and congratulate these folks. I'm so proud of them. I know you are. I know the community is going to be so supportive of this. And again, it's, 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 it's an honor for me to come down and present this to them. I'm going to read this to you, Sheriff. Certificate of Accreditation from the Virginia Law Enforcement Professional Standards Commission. This document certifies that the Northumberland County Sheriff's Office came before the Virginia Law Enforcement Professional Standards Commission on June 9th, 2022, and has met the requirements set forth by the said commission, and is therefore certified as an accredited agency for a period of four years. Signed by myself, Sheriff C.O. Balderson, Virginia Sheriff's Association, Executive Director of the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services, Mr. Jackson H. Miller, and by Colonel Anthony S. Pike, Virginia Association of Chiefs of Police. Sheriff, that's an honor well-earned, congratulations.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Come on up here, do, do. Get your helmet. Got my cane with me.
You might want to stand up there.
Oh, boy.
Sheriff Balderson.
Yes, sir.
How many other counties in the Northern Deck, including Essex, are certified like this?
There's three of us, us, Lancaster, and also.
Got you.
Over, over, a little over 400 agencies. There's 104 in this state that's accredited, so if you've done a lot of work, you can get some others on board, then we'll, we'll try to work on it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
I do just have a couple of words.
Yes, please.
Only a couple?
We'll do a couple more than a couple, how about that? Mr. Chairman, board members, and everybody here tonight, again, this is a great accomplishment by the sheriff's office, not just me, but you heard Doc Lyons was my first accreditation manager and got us to that point, worked very hard. Greg Keizer is now taking the reins. He may even have the hardest job, which is keeping up with four years of accreditation. And I'll be remiss if I didn't mention Major Garland. He was the go-to, the policy changer, everything that these guys needed in his office. It really wasn't in my office. So I can't sit here and take all the credit. This is an amazing team, and this is what they did. I just, I'm the elected sheriff, and I get to take the picture and, and look pretty, I guess. But my hat's off to these gentlemen, and I hope the community is going to be proud of what we, what we have accomplished and what will, will keep going and remain accredited. So thank you.
191. That's a lot of things to get done.
Yep. But you heard how few actually have it, too.
Yeah, that's what I did hear.
A lot of, some state agencies don't have it either.
All right, well, that's, I am very pleased. All right, our next item on this list is Stacy Wind, RCC Remote Area Medical Clinic Presentation.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. I'm Stacy Wind, and I'm here on behalf of Rappahannock Community College and the Remote Area Medical Clinic. We're fortunate to bring that back this year. The last year it was here was 2019, prior to the pandemic in Richmond County. This is a free medical, dental, and vision clinic open to anyone at a first-come, first-served basis. So we start Friday setting up, the parking lot opens at midnight, and we start services at 6:00 a.m. on Saturday, and the same thing goes for Sunday. We do everything from glasses to teeth cleanings and extractions, women's health, full clinic for vaccinations. We have revive training, and they'll give out naloxone. We have a clothing and food drive. It's impressive our nursing students have collected probably at least eight to 10 truckloads of items that still have tags on it. Like I said, it's open to anyone, so this is not just in our region, but we have people that come as volunteers and patients from out of state. It's impressive. RAM is a nonprofit that brings all of the equipment, and then they have a core team, and then we recruit anywhere from 150 to 300 volunteers each day. We are run fully off of donations and fundraising, and we serve anywhere from 400 to 600 patients over the course of the two days. This is open from, for infants up to older adults, so families can come. And there's also follow-up care, so if there's something that needs more attention, then we assist with giving them that follow-up care free of charge. So I have flyers here. We are still looking for volunteers, too. The most unattractive volunteer opportunity is the night shift in the parking lot, because as I said, it opens at midnight. So Seth Craig, who's the paramedic, and he's at RCC, too, he is the lead of our night shift, and so he is heavily recruiting volunteers for night shift. And then also on Sunday, there's a few hours where we're packing everything up and cleaning up so school can resume on Monday, and so we're still looking for those. We have a full clinic of medical professionals and dental, but we are still looking for optometrists as well. So if you know of anyone, and I appreciate any support you all can give, Richmond County and Essex have donated, as well as the town of Warsaw, and lots of civic organizations in the community. Any questions?
Yeah, one that I was going to ask about the flyers.
Yes.
Do you have a breakdown of localities that are actually served through this program?
I could give you something from 2019. But Bay Transit is also running and aware of this, and they are hoping that they will get calls for rides. We'll also have heated tents, so if anyone doesn't have transportation to get there, they will have somewhere warm to wait until it's their turn.
No appointment needed, just walk in?
No, it's a first-come, first-served basis. It would be hard to do that. It would be hard to do that just because it's hard to determine how many providers we will have until the day of, because anything could happen. So the way that works is at 4:00 a.m. that morning, the RAM team coordinates how many patients on average they could serve in that timeframe based on the providers that are there. So that's why we open it up ahead of time, so people can get in line. And since COVID, we are following full COVID precautions with masks and everything, and they're also limiting the number of people inside at a time. So they will do parking lot check-in. They have a software system that does all of that, and so they'll remain in their cars until it's their turn to get their services or at least go through the intake to head inside. So we, of course, encourage everyone that comes to have a full tank of gas and food and any medications that they need during that time.
One thing you said, mask, but you don't have it on there. Flyers, do you?
No, it's not on there.
When you said donations, what, what is the average donation that the county is giving?
The counties have given anywhere from 1,000 to 1,500.
All right, anyone else have any questions?
And I'll put the volunteer and the patient flyers in the back if anyone wants to take any around the community to help us get the word out. There's QR codes on there, so for patients, it's more information on the services that are offered, and for the volunteer, it takes you to an application, because anyone on-premise has to complete the application to volunteer.
All right. Any other questions?
You said the age, what's the age, what's the youngest?
There's no age requirement. And no identification is taken, so.
Yeah, I see that.
Completely anonymous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next item would be an update from the, from Virginia Department of Transportation. Mr. Beal, how you do, sir?
I'm doing well. Thanks for having me. We've been busy. We have swept surface-treated roads across the county. We cleaned pipes in the Calio area, and I know that they were working in the Reedville area today. We've cleaned ditches on Harry Hogan. We cut brush on 200 on the upper end. We patched potholes countywide. We mowed for site distance. We repaired shoulders on 200 and addressed work orders countywide. Upcoming is our final mow of the year. We'll pick up all the litter across the county and within the right-of-way and mow all the grass. We planted clean pipes on 360 countywide. We'll keep up with potholes. We are prepping for snow season. We'll have dry runs the first week of November, so I believe the dry run here is on a Thursday, on that Thursday. If you see plow trucks with spreaders and lights driving around on, on dry roads, they're just, they're just getting their practice in. We'll be cutting brush on 200 and continuing to address work orders. The surface treatment schedule is now complete. The Cape Seal schedule, I have that under construction. They had some striping that was left to be done in Lewisetta. That's now complete. And the plant mix, we still have a little bit of finished work to do in Heathville, and also some striping to do in Burgess. So those are the only two items that are outstanding. Under the structure and bridge portion of the report, 604 and 605, those projects were bid together, and they are going to be recommended for award. I would anticipate will be under contract first of November. I would not anticipate seeing work begin on that until the first of December. And if you remember, those two bridges are coupled with maybe six or eight others across the district. So until we get the contractor's schedule, I don't know when he will start specifically in Northumberland on those two bridges, but as soon as I know, I will let you know. And I think that is everything on my report. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to take them.
All right, any other board members have any questions?
Yes, I have. Beginning of, right off, while comical, Brownstone Road, right at the beginning, when you make that turn, it's a lot of water stands right there on that corner. It's like, and also on Light Street, likely to check those ditches again.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
I have nothing.
Tommy, you got anything?
Yeah, when you do the scour on those bridges, will that result in road closures right there?
Yes, there'll be detours set up for both of them, and we'll advertise those in advance.
Make sure you notify the school system so they can factor that into their transportation purposes. That spot on 200 where you patched it twice, it looks like to me, that last rain we have now has dropped another two inches or so, especially on the northbound lane. It's not smooth with the surface like you had the prior treatments.
Okay, we'll check on that.
So I'm getting to wonder is, are you going to have a failure there? You've, you've done it one time, you did riprap before you were there on the bank, or you had the little swell, they put riprap there, and you've done twice this year where the wash has had. Fortunately, the last rain was three, four inches, but it was spread over. These heavy rains are what's cutting that, whatever layer you've got off, and I don't know what it's doing underneath.
Okay, we'll, we'll look into it.
I guess it's in the same spot, but the stoplight bar in Burgess, looks like, I've been told, and I actually stopped that, I was the first car in there, you're almost looking straight up at it.
That's part of what they need to fix.
Yeah, I was going to say, I mean, I, I don't sit normally, I've got to look up, and that's, I thought it was too far forward.
I think they moved it way ahead this time.
Yeah, at least.
That's what's left to do.
15, 20 feet or better. All right. And I've seen on a lot of your secondary roads, arrows and markings that corks. What's that about? Curiosity?
We are doing an inventory of all of our pipes, so, or they have a GPS-enabled service probe, and they're marking the locations, they're checking them to see if they're in good condition, what type of, what size, if they're, need to be cleaned, and when they do that, they're marking the pipe on the road.
Yeah, I, I've seen plenty of markers, I was just curious what it was about, so. Thank you.
That's a statewide effort, just to gather that asset.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
When, when did you, see you got upcoming grass cutting, do you have any dates, an idea of when that's going to start?
So the contractor that has Northumberland has three counties, and we authorized him, he has 30 days to complete a contract, regardless of how many contracts he has. So we authorized him to start on the primaries on the 19th, I'm sorry, on the 17th, I believe, that's a Monday. And he has 30 days to finish that. That's the primary routes. We actually authorized him to start on the secondaries, I believe it was the end of September, I don't remember the exact date. So he's really only asked till the end of October to finish the secondaries, or he'll be late.
Could he go cut?
I don't think he started yet.
He's going to go do both of them again, complete, sort of thought. All right, just, what I guess we're bringing up now, part of it, David and Luttrell and myself and a few others have been meeting with the people in Reedville concerning speed. I think Luttrell's got it in the board docs. They requested speed signs, I mean, not speed signs, uh.
Speeds 30.
Watch children signs, they want speed bumps to, and something with the watch children signs. And if you need any board docs, look. David gave Luttrell the price and all stuff. Had a few minutes ago. What's that on the, I looked at it a while ago.
The pricing is about $850 per sign. $850 per sign, I think is what.
Fifty.
Eight, 850 dollars.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, I saw it in there a while ago somewhere, I was looking at it.
Yeah, it's on the second page of the document I placed in board docs.
Anyway, they requested those signs. I don't know, and right on the back of requesting those signs, they made the statement that they had put up signs like that before, and they did no good. Did slow down, I mean, they had the ones that put children and pets at play or something like that. But the signs are $850, and David won't pay for them. This county's got to do it.
Well, actually, the way it's been is the citizens in the area pay for it.
The who?
The citizens in the area pay for it.
And not for those that don't, that go to the code, because that's, that's got to be an agreement reached between either the town and the county or something like that.
We allow them to be installed under permit, so the permit, you would assume responsibility for installation. for installation and maintenance. If there were an HOA or some entity to issue the permit to, we could issue the permit to them, but in this case, I'm not aware of any entity down in Reedville that we could issue the permit to, other than a private citizen. And so I think they were asking the county to get the permit and undertake the signs.
I know that other children have played signs, and the county's not paid for it.
The policy could have changed.
Yeah, but then you got people who are out of their own pocket paying for it, now they're stuck.
I just wanted to bring out, if you have any questions for him?
Yeah, I see where the code section says that it shall be paid for by the county or town. But then if it's a question, it doesn't do any good. And I'm sure the speed sign, you've done one there, it's within the eighty-five percentile.
Yeah, it was in thirty-five mile an hour section, I think it was, eighty-fifth percentile was thirty-nine, and in the twenty-five mile an hour section, eighty-fifth percentile was twenty-eight.
What could, what have they displayed on, like, just like a nine-one-one signs are?
No, the watch for children signs is yellow.
But I mean, the poles, what kind of, don't tell you, just the same type of metal poles?
Yeah, it's just a two-inch galvanized steel post.
Yeah, the breakaway pole.
Is it specified a size or anything?
Of the sign itself?
Yeah.
I think the sign itself.
I don't see.
I believe the sign's thirty-six by thirty-six.
It says the warning signs W fifteen dash V one, which I presume is a stock sign.
Yeah, that's the, that's the yellow sign, says watch for children.
Yeah.
And, I mean, it's positioned as a diagonal, it's just a square, I think it's thirty-six by thirty-six.
Yep, eight fifty.
And I'll just, for me, we could get one made for a lot less than eight hundred and fifty dollars.
I don't think so.
It has to meet certain specifications, I think.
Reflective standards.
Yeah, the standard, you just, if you called a sign company and said, I need a W, you know, whatever it is, they'll know exactly what, and they'll ask you what size. That's the MUTCD manual, Uniform Traffic Control Devices, lists all the signs that are used across the country.
It's made of Scotch-like material, the reflector type, that you can see it light on.
Right.
It's a metal sign with a reflective.
And I think that.
Yeah, it's aluminum, with that just on top of it.
Yeah.
I would, I would venture to guess that the sign and post and all the hardware, you're probably about half that cost, and then the rest of that is installation and whatever else. So if the county, you know, had somebody to put it up, you know, that, we wouldn't be, you wouldn't realize the full eight fifty if you had some forces to do that.
We got somebody to put it up, that's not the issue.
I'd be happy to call our sign then or find out what the sign, how much it costs.
Yeah.
But I would, I would guess it's probably about half that.
All right. So it would just be one sign, right? Because the way this reads, it says, uh,
We would allow one sign to be installed.
Entering.
We would allow two signs to be installed. I believe the playground is right there on three sixty, right?
The streets at the major entry points.
So you have the commercial traffic coming from the dead end, and you have everybody going the other way, but it would be up to you.
So you can do some checking on that, of course, and, all right.
So we have, right?
Yeah, yes, sir, and, uh,
Mr. Beal, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you, all right, thank you, have a good night.
All right.
All right, the next item on the agenda is an update from Northumberland County Schools.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Supervisors. I was going to start us out in this packet that I believe each of you have, and provide you with some of our weekly highlights. If you look at page one, you can see that we, Mr. Jason Bellows, our Director of Finance, tendered his resignation, and his last day is going to be this coming Monday, so we do have that job posted, and we are accepting applications for Director of Finance for the school system. We are looking, if you, you know, as you spread the word on this, we are looking to do interviews in a timely fashion, so this could be a decision that is made before your next meeting, so just giving you some awareness of that. Also, on our job board, you will see a new secondary agriculture science education teacher posted, so if you know anyone who has gone through an approved agriculture education program, we encourage you to have them apply. This could be a four-year college degree, but it also can be a teaching position that's done through a different pathway. So if you can help us spread the word, we're excited about that. We also have posted a secondary agriculture science, it's a paraprofessional or instructional assistant position to help out, and we continue to be looking for a computer literacy and keyboarding teacher that has been a position that has been hard to find a candidate for. So all of these positions are located on our website, you click on Human Resources and Employment Opportunities, and it's an online application system. So we appreciate your help in spreading the word, as well as anyone who's listening online or in our audience this evening. On page one, you can see our elementary school celebrated crunch hard round the Commonwealth, and they did that on October sixth. Everyone fit into an apple at the same time, which was a big hit at the elementary school, and this was to celebrate positive nutrition and the extraordinary produce that is available in the Northern Neck. If you look at page two and three, you can see that the class of nineteen sixty-two celebrated their sixtieth class reunion, and this was last Saturday, so there's a class picture as well as highlights from their reunion. So very fun, and we appreciate them sharing. On pages three and four, I provided, just highlighting our Army JROTC cadets, they do such an amazing job in parades, at our football games, on volleyball games, you name it, they're everywhere, and they, we very much appreciate them. On page four, you can see that the Northumberland High School marching band competed in the Stafford Showcase, and they have their new uniforms that are washable on, so if you haven't been to a football game recently, they do have their new uniforms, so please join us at some of our hymn games and check that out. On page five, we encourage all of our families to please send students to school as much as possible and on a daily, consistent basis. Students who miss just two days per month means that equates to a student missing ten percent of the school year. Our accreditation is based on, a piece of it is based on student attendance. More importantly, it's important for students to be in school regularly and on a daily basis, so that they receive every educational opportunity and that they master the skills necessary. So please encourage, if you do have students in your lives or families, please encourage everyone to send students to school as much as possible. On page five, I'm also bringing awareness to virtual learning days. The Department of Education allows schools across, public schools across the Commonwealth to access ten virtual learning days per school year. These virtual learning days may not be pre-announced, they are based off of things such as weather conditions or other events where a school cannot open, but we can offer access to remote learning days. So just bringing awareness to that. On page six, we're starting a new communication piece. Usually, we do our instant messenger phone calls, we also send the same information through emails to parents, and now we are layering that with text messaging to our parents and families. And the text message feature will launch on November first. There is a graphic there, student, or, I'm sorry, families need to opt-in for the text messaging, so we need to make sure that families update their Power School accounts and make sure that the correct information is in there, so that they can begin receiving the text messages. On page six, you will also see that winter sports tryouts are coming up, and students do need to have an updated physical if they plan to participate in winter sports. We do have a spirit wear store on our website, so I know the holidays are coming up and birthdays, et cetera, if you have students in the school system, there are some really attractive school spirit clothing items that, you know, we encourage you to perhaps purchase some of the, when you do this, some of that money goes back into our sporting programs. So that's there for you. And next week is homecoming. Every single school, elementary, middle, and high, is doing something special for homecoming. We have spirit days Monday through Friday. Friday is a home football game versus West Worland, the Eagles, and we also are having a parade on Friday prior to the game. And then on Saturday is the regular high school homecoming dance, so the students are really looking forward to a great weekend ahead. And I'm just looking, page ten, if you need calendar reminders, I included some of those for the upcoming months for you to peruse, and that pretty much finishes the weekly highlights, and this message will go out tomorrow to our families and community. And Mr. Bellows is here to report out as well.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I hope you all are doing well. I just wanted to give you all kind of an update on, we finished our fiscal year FY22 strong, and so I wanted to give you our estimated surplus return fund balance is about two-point three-six percent, or four-hundred-and-sixty-six-thousand-three-hundred-twenty-eight dollars, is about what I expect that we'll be returning this year, and which you should see in your audit report up in November when they do the audit. The majority of that came from the three positions we were not able to fill last year, and that is basically the conclusion of my report tonight, if you have any questions regarding that, I'll attempt to answer those. Otherwise, I feel like we have felt, left in a really good, strong place, and I would encourage you as the board to work with the school board and the school system about using some of those funds potentially, and the many capital projects that are out there that are, that y'all have to, are going to have to address in the future, that works really well with us in Lancaster, when trying to use some of these funds, either for your reserve fund or to earmark toward capital projects, and free up some of your future budgets from those expenditures.
All right, any board members having any questions?
First, I want to thank you for your service, I think you've done a fantastic job, you've been a good person to work with.
I appreciate it, and I thank you all, and I continue to, hope you all will continue to build y'all's relationship together and meet and have dialect, and I think you'll be in a good spot if you continue to have those open communication lines.
Boy, I'd like to ask the superintendent a couple of questions. When do our SOL tests start?
You know, at the elementary school, they don't test until May, but at the middle and high, depending on the course, they may have fall testing as well as spring testing.
Okay. Many of our students taking advantage of the dual program?
Yes.
What grades do they start at dual programs?
For the dual enrollment, you know, they're, it's primarily juniors and seniors, but there are some creative situations for, we try to meet students where they are, so if there is a student who's qualified, we absolutely encourage them to participate.
I know we have some slots at the location of the center that we can send students for special programs?
Yes.
How many slots do we have?
We have fifty-two students participating at the Northern Neck Technical Center currently, which is a really nice representation, we're one of the highest participating school divisions, not as many as Richmond County, because they kind of have it in advantage, because the tech center is right there, but it is a very, it's a nice participation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bell.
I have a request.
Okay.
And I got to update the board on a little bit of this later on tonight. We're going to have a Christmas celebration December the fourth, and it started four P.M. I would like to see if the band or some of the students that are in the band could come and play, and if the school has a choir, they would come and participate in that event, if they don't have anything else going on.
Okay, I will check, I'm sure they would love to, I do know that occasionally, they do participate in parade competition, so I think that, you know, that would be the only scheduling conflict I can think of, would that be in Heathsville?
Yes, right in front of the, in front of the old courthouse.
Okay, perfect, I'll share that as soon as I go to my seat.
Okay, if you find a, tonight, let me know, if you don't, can you contact Morgan?
Absolutely.
And let her know, would love to have them, and give them an opportunity to come in the community.
Absolutely, and thank you for the invitation, so I have my iPad, I'll message the director.
That's all I have.
Well, if not the band, you could have a possible choral group, because there is some singing there, too, or both, for that matter.
Either, either or, or both.
Okay, I will check with the directors, thank you, Mr. Brand.
What do you know about the Dinwiddie chemistry explosion?
You know, I know that it occurred, I, in all honesty, you know, I haven't had the time to really delve into that, I did see there was a newspaper article, I honestly haven't had time, we've been pretty busy.
My only reason to ask that question is that something that, in worst-case scenario, could happen here?
Absolutely, it probably could happen, you know, I was thinking of reflecting, my husband was a chemistry teacher, right, and so I think it could affect any school that has chemistry.
I mean, Dinwiddie is. It's a lot safer today than when we were in there.
Yeah, I know.
Because teachers back then certainly had access to some things that you don't have access today.
Yep, we always like to mix.
Big jar of sodium, or, yeah.
Well, Dinwiddie is closer to VCU, especially the burn area, where, if somebody's burnt bad enough, as, the pack, I could tell you, they're flying, if we can get it there, and that's one of my concerns is, you know, that's a serious situation when you have explosions and possible fires, so.
Yes, absolutely.
I mean, if, whatever safety protocols that need to be put in place, if they aren't already need to be in place.
Thank you, Mr. Tomlin. We do have, Gary Dickens is our chemistry teacher, he's very, he does a great job, but we'll definitely be looking at everything that happened in Dinwiddie, and then learning from whatever it is that.
Well, like Jimmy said, I'm less concerned about the teacher than some of the students, what they can mix together and have some creative experiments.
Sure, thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah.
Other questions?
Oh?
No.
Ryan?
No, I don't have any.
Mr. Bellows, thank you for your time here.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And good luck.
Thank you.
Are you at liberty, or do you want to say where you're going next?
Not yet, I'm waiting for them to make the announcement.
I got you, okay, I was just curious. Thank you, enjoy the time.
One other thing, is it possible for you to make a flyer on your open positions in the school system?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Would you like me to make some flyers? Okay. Maybe contact me the beginning of next week?
Okay.
Okay, or I could email it to you, too, if you can print it.
Okay, thank you.
The science teacher, they have to be certified in agriculture, right?
Well, that's a great question, I looked at the requirements that are based in code, and there are different pathways for it, so a person who's possibly had a lot of experience in agriculture, there.
We've got farmers around here that may want to.
It seems to be that there is a pathway for something more creative than only, you know, a four-year college degree from, let's say, Virginia Tech, who is really, you know, that school's very well-known for ag ed.
Yeah, but farmers got practical experience, and sometimes we know educational tracks don't always give us.
That's right, and just remember, we have totally redone the greenhouse, so it's in great shape, it's going to, I'm really optimistic and excited, we want to establish FFA, you know, just lots of great things happening, we need to find a teacher about.
I understand. I understand.
So if you can help with that, that would be awesome. All right. Well, Mr. Chairman, that concludes our report of this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Very, very nice report.
Thank you.
And thank you for coming.
And that was December 3rd, I think. I think it was on the 4th.
December the 3rd, yes. Yes, December the 3rd.
Dr. Worga, that, it's December 3rd.
Okay.
Yes.
For the band?
Yes. I said 4th, but it's the 3rd.
Okay. Thank you.
And I, I don't know if the board has any questions. There is a document in the board docs regarding the bus estimates that they had received. The, the board did approve in its CIP program, $200,000 for two buses. But those estimates did come back a little bit higher. So went to inform the board and wasn't sure how the board wanted to proceed on that, that item.
We haven't gotten the carryover funds yet, have we?
Not yet. No, I, I mean, we, we haven't seen, they're just beginning the, the audit of those, those funds. So.
To me, when that was time to look at it then.
Okay.
Well, this is something that is really needed, right? I mean, if they ask for them, undoubtedly they need them.
We can find out more information as far as timeframe on obtaining those buses because I know it's, um, supply chain issues and, and different things too.
That's what I was going to just, Dr. Worga, do you know of any lead, how, any supply issues on getting buses?
Yes, there is, you know, an issue, a challenge. So the earlier we placed the order, I would think the funds have to be spent in a certain timeframe. So we have to receive the material, um, meaning the bus and the buses. There's one specialized bus and one regular passenger vehicle. And we definitely need them.
Oh, yeah. Do you have a second?
No.
All right. Next item, county administrative report. I'm about to, I'm going to let you take over.
All right. Uh, for the month of August, uh, we had seven new structures. Total construction cost for the month was $5.7 million. For September, uh, we had seven new structures as well. Total construction cost for the month was approximately 6.7 million with total construction cost year to date about 46.5 million. And that puts us approximately 1.9 million above this time last year. Do have several supplemental appropriations I need the board to take action on. The first one is the transfer of funds from account number 10265, which is the concealed weapon permit account to the general fund in the amount of $1,163. And I need the supplemental appropriation, those monies to go to budget line item 31025409.
No move.
Second. All right, got a motion, second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next one is for the sheriff's office as well, uh, transfer of funds from account number 10281, which is the funds received from the federal forfeiture monies in the amount of $1,914.43 supplemental appropriation to 31028800.
No move.
Second. Hang on, a motion, second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Again, sheriff's office transfer of funds from account 10281, federal asset forfeiture account, uh, in the amount of $1,995.65 supplemental appropriation to account 31028800.
No move.
Second. All right, got a motion, second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Last supplemental appropriation that I have is, uh, in the amount of $39,096.66 for the Calio revitalization grant for fiscal year 2023 closeout.
This is not new money, correct?
It's not new money. It's just carryover monies from last fiscal year.
No move. Second.
All right, got a motion, second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And, uh, just to follow up on that, we were able to use all of those funds. We had several extensions there. Um, one thing that we are following up with DHCD on is the use of the $25,000 that, uh, we had committed to doing sewer projects. Um, they wanted to close out the project and we've gotten, we've received the paperwork to close out that project. Actually have them to, to sign now. Um, but once we close out that project, we need to approach DHCD again about the use of those $25,000 to possibly assist with some of the projects that the Calio Hometown Community Association would like to do. Next in your package, I received an email from, uh, Mr. Woller, uh, from the sanitary district. Also in the CIP program, we were looking to use ARPA funds for this particular project. Were two estimates for the Reedville generator. Uh, one estimate was $58,248 and the other estimate was $54,730. Now, the cheaper one, the $54,000 generator estimate has a 52-week lead time and the $58,248 has a 10-week lead time. I don't know if you have any, any other questions on that. Mr. Woller, I don't think is able to be here tonight.
In, outside of the time differential, what, if any difference is there beside, in the price?
Uh, as far as I know, they were spec, uh, with the same, uh, standards. So I don't know of any other, other differences on that.
Normally we go low bid. Do we have justification because of the time to go to a higher bid? They can't, if we say deliberate within 12 weeks, they can't perform.
Correct. Yeah.
So that's one of the basis that they can't do it.
Anything that would prohibit, prohibit that, but.
Fine. I mean, that's a, what is it, to service?
As for a generator.
To service.
Replacement of, of a generator.
For emergency services.
For the sanitary district.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, I think you have justification.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we go with the higher, you know, estimate, albeit it's higher, but they can't perform in the timeframe in which we need. And that's the justification that I think we can, I, I would vote on that basis.
52 weeks is a long time.
52 versus 10, you can lose a lot of power in that period of time.
Yeah. Anything can happen in that timeframe. I'll second your motion.
Second it.
He did, yeah.
Oh, you can second it.
No, I don't want to second. I want some discussion.
All right. Any discussion on this?
Yeah, just, I, I read it and I talked a lot about it today, downline it. It's a lot of money to put, I think, for something that might not use at all for a year, two years, mountain. I just wondered if we wouldn't be better at looking at our options of running those generators when a potential storm's coming. It's a lot less, less money. You can go wherever the upkeep on them. And looking into them. I know some of the other business. I know Lady put in a big one, which is Brown and Evans, uh, Evans Oyster Company with all the freezers they got. He's got an account with Sunbelt, one of those rental companies. And you call them, they set them on the hour if you need them. And there were nothing like it much in prices at the time. I talked to them, but it was telling me a year or so ago, they got $1,000, $1,200. And we got one down there now, you think, what is $3,000 a month?
Uh, we, we have a rental down there currently, um, and it is $3,000 a month.
And I just wondered, the board be interested in exploring some other options.
$3,000 a month times 12, $39,000. You've almost, almost paid for the whole thing within one year.
But you don't run it the whole time. You run it when you need it, which might not be the whole year.
Yeah. But I can tell you, if we have the power for a period of time, I know what we're going to hear.
Well, how long, how long does it take them to, to actually get it there? Well, it has to be done once it's gotten there.
But you have to plug, plug right in, just like your other one would be.
It's all set up just for, just for plug and play. That's not too bad. And I don't know what that timeframe and its own delivery of it, you know?
Well, it's, most of the time, you're, it's like an emergency might have, but most of storms, you know they're coming. I just said something to look in, run just up, spend $54,000. But they're doing some research on it.
Is the motion on the floor? Did you make a motion, Tom?
Yeah.
Yeah, we got a motion on the floor right now. We just discussed it.
Richard's second and he can withdraw it if he wants.
Yeah, I second if he, Richard withdraw.
And we can wait and do some research on it. We do have that option, but that's up to you if you want to withdraw your motion.
I do not wish to withdraw it.
All right.
No good wonder, idea.
Good.
We're closed up on it.
Give me a second. Yeah, I'm keeping a second.
Okay.
All right, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against?
Nay.
All right. Order one.
And for the record, not voting nay against having it there, but looking for the most feasible way to do it rather than just jumping by something, though then investigating and so forth.
Well, we have David Wold as the head of the rebuild sanitation. I would assume that he's done his due diligence. And I know what happens when storms come. Everybody wants one, you may not get one.
All right. Look, all right. Next item I have is just an update on the Reedville traffic update. Uh, we did have a meeting with the public in the Reedville area on September 27th at the Fairfield Volunteer Fire Department. Sheriff Beecham was there, Supervisor Jet, uh, had state police representative David Beal with VDOT, myself. Um, I think it went pretty well. There was a lot of discussion. The watch for children signs did come up and we had discussed that. Um, but another item that did come up out of that meeting was that the language in our current ordinance sort of conflicts with, with itself in that the, um, main street has several different speed limits on it. It begins at 35 and then transitions to 25. Golf carts can only be, uh, located in that area that's designated 25 miles per hour or less. So in your board docs is, um, draft language and I have been talking to, uh, Mr. Gregory about that language, um, to clarify that language even for the sheriff's office since it's a gray area, uh, in that language. We would need to advertise this for a public hearing, uh, for a change in the ordinance. And just looking to seek guidance from the board of supervisors to move forward in, in advertising that for that clarification.
Well, we would have to then, in the area we've got, where it's 35, you can't have golf carts legally.
Legally.
I've seen too many golf carts, even when we're coming down reviewing them, or possibly considering people riding golf carts around.
Golf carts everywhere now.
I know that.
And other zones where they posted 55 too.
And golf carts-
Would you have to have a long public hearing?
Yeah.
We'd have to hear to change that language.
If you would be amending your ordinance, that requires a public hearing, yes, sir.
Even when it's in conflict with the code.
I move that we advertise for a public hearing to change this language.
I'll second it.
Yeah, I agree.
Won't be in conflict.
All right, we got a motion, second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is this the only location that we're aware of? They've got this problem?
We will double check, uh, those roads, um, before we advertise. If there is a conflict with another area, we'll, we'll check that.
Well, can you do it as a general change as opposed to specifics? Because if we're just changing from 35 to 25, that wouldn't be anything specific to say another area subdivision.
You're meaning as far as having something somewhere else in the ordinance that has like a blanket statement, this only pertains to roads that are 25 miles per hour?
That's what the code requires. That's why I-
Yeah. I'll, I'll get with, uh, Mr. Gregory and see what we can come up with.
Do what you have to to get it changed. That's the bottom line.
Okay.
Or get it advertised to be changed. The one area that has all the golf carts in the world hasn't requested it, Indian Creek Yacht and Country Club.
There was, uh, also a concern of, uh, placement of golf cart signs in that area. And, um, in the ordinance itself, it does have, that the citizens are required to install and maintain one sign, uh, each of the aforementioned highways. So that's specifically in our, our ordinance now. So.
Yeah. Because that came into question down that other night.
Right.
That they weren't told that in theirs. But it was in the ordinance.
That, that was adopted, I think, in the original ordinance.
Yeah, the beginning.
Next item I have is the Northern Neck Regional Jail budget amendment for fiscal year 2122. Uh, the Northern Neck Regional Jail Board did approve this at their September board meeting and it's to amend the budget by $600,000 and there's no additional cost to the localities.
That's last year's fiscal budget.
Correct.
We need a motion.
We need a motion on that?
We, we do. Yes, sir.
No move.
Second.
All right. Got a motion, second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
In your packet is some information on, um, some budgetary software, personnel budgeting, capital improvement budgeting software. And currently, the way we are managing the budget on an annual basis is through an Excel spreadsheet. Um, and that's not unique to, to North Carolina. Many localities do that. But there is software out there to manage budgets. Um, this has a little bit more flexibility and not that, and Mr. Basie and I have discussed this a little bit. And also they brought in, uh, Mary Dotson, the bookkeeper, uh, for the personnel budgeting. Um, what we're refining is a lot of modifications, changes to personnel, whether it's, uh, percentage increases, health insurance. Um, there's a lot of calculations that go on behind the scenes, uh, in Excel, uh, on personnel side and even on the budgetary side. Um, we were provided this, uh, presentation. It was something that we thought would be interesting to see how the board wanted to proceed with it. Um, we did review two companies. ClearGov is the company that, um, we would recommend as far as if we move forward with that particular, uh, company. Um, we were looking at using ARPA funds for this, uh, software. Uh, we were not looking at using this to replace the ERP, our financial software package. We are still evaluating that side of things. Uh, this would just be in addition to that, that software. I don't know if the board has any questions. Uh, we'll certainly try to, to answer those.
If you went to another financial type program, would this be able to work conjunction with that? Or would it be independent of it?
It, it would be independent of it. Um, they would export to one another, but they would not be joined in any way.
Any other questions?
This would also help with the public to be able to understand the budget some too, correct?
Correct. It, that's the idea. It's, um, I, I think the, to get it started, it's going to be a little learning, just like the Brightly software that we have now. Um, but it is something that I, I think can be implemented fairly quickly for the next budget cycle. Um, and even for, partially for the capital improvement cycle from, that's something that we need to get started fairly soon.
The motion. I move that we grant this request.
Which one? The Clear, ClearGov?
Yeah, ClearGov.
I second the motion.
All right, we got a motion, second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in All right, we got a motion to second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next item I have is a right-of-way agreement from Dominion Energy through Team Fischel. They are asking, and this is part of the regional broadband initiative, and they've been securing right-of-way agreements. And the county happens to own a piece of property, which is the Glee Point Fishing Pier, the main portion of that. And they are seeking permission to bury the cable through that, that area. So that's the reason for bringing this to the board, to grant that, that request.
Would this require a public hearing?
No, sir, because this is a public, essentially a public utility.
Normally, we gave an interest in county property, so.
That's correct.
Just want to make sure. And this would be underground as opposed to aerial?
Correct. There may be, in discussing this with the gentleman, the, they are going underwater. And I believe it's going to be about eight foot under the Great Rockhamica there, and then they're coming under that. Now, they may need to cut a patch in the asphalt to capture the cable coming back across, but they would fix that, that patch.
Since we don't need a public hearing, I move that we approve this easement with Dominion. I'd hate to see things stop at the bridge.
Second. All right, we got a motion to second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next item I have is, in your packet, the, there's a request for proposals, a draft for the solid waste and recycling services. We would like to go ahead and get that out as the current contract ends next year, middle of next year. And we'd like to go ahead and get that process going. Typically, what we've done in the past is we've piggyback or jointly gone in with Richmond County. They're looking at doing a little bit different process. I think they're looking at doing a bidding process. This is a request for proposals process. I don't know if the board has any specific questions, but we would like to go ahead and get that out as soon as possible.
And this would handle the recycling piece too?
Correct.
I move that we, author, I can move forward with the RP.
Second.
All right, got a motion to second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, Mr. Chairman, the next item, I think Mr. Gregory wanted to place on the agenda, so I'll let him handle that one.
Thank you, Mr. Tadlock. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you. Some months ago, the county was approached by Mr. Thomas David Hinton with a proposal for the purchase of approximately sixty-seven acre tract adjacent to the landfill, the old landfill that's owned jointly by Northumberland County, Lancaster County, and Richmond County. And the offer is for the three counties to purchase the property jointly. The other counties have agreed to do so and have approved the purchase and sale contract. The price, the total purchase price is approximately forty thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars. And so Northumberland County's share would be approximately thirteen thousand, four hundred and ten dollars. Recommend you, you go forward with the purchase and request your motion as expressed in your agenda document, please.
Do we have to have a public hearing to purchase it?
No, sir.
I move, move forward with it.
Second. All right, got a motion to second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
This would be in worst case scenario, in case something leaches out of the existing landfill, we wouldn't have to buy the land potentially at a premium price. And we've got monitoring wells, which will be there forever right now.
Thank you.
And this is on the downstream side too?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Gregory.
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Tadlock?
Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
That's all you have?
Yes, sir.
All right. Our next item would be the approval of a check register. Buddha will approve. All right, got a motion to have second.
Second.
All right, got a motion to second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next item, board, board comments. Mr. Blong, you want to start?
Yes. Mr. Tadlock, the, my first two questions are about the school. The present school board office, we got the leak. We're taking care of that, right?
We are moving forward with getting the second phase of the roof. And the engineer is supposed to be here next week to examine the roof, to start putting those construction documents together so we can put that out for bid.
Okay, and my second question, the old school board office has, has been turned over, turned over to the county, right?
It has, it's in the process. We are still waiting on, we actually received some additional information today on the survey work. And there's some follow-up on that, but that's the last component that we need.
Okay, and my last concern, I'd like to make a motion. Is this a good time? I want to make a motion that we give this remote program, the vision, dental medical, since it's serving some of our citizens, it probably served quite a few, you know? And this is a good thing. You have kids and people missing work because of dental, vision, medical, they don't have insurance. So I would make a motion that we give, give this clinic at least a thousand dollars.
All right, have a second.
I'll second that.
All right, got a motion to second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against?
That's all I have.
All right, just want to make sure. I'll finish. Is that all you have?
Come back to me.
Come back?
Yeah.
Tom?
I don't have anything back here.
Right.
One just?
I, I have one thing. Jackson, give us an update on All Points, All Points Broadband.
They are continuing to move forward with their, their projects. We're continuing to receive individuals that are interested in the service. We're, Mr. Basie's turning those over to All Points for any feedback on those. They did provide a, an update to the Northern Neck Plain District at their quarterly meeting. I'll try and get a, that presentation and get that to the Board of Supervisors.
Well, could we have them either appear quarterly, in person, or at least in writing?
Yeah.
Because I saw King George, they weren't happy, and they put in half a million more than everybody else. And that's one of the things they expressed was lack of quote-unquote transparency, not showing up, not knowing. And they were very unhappy that Richmond County got the first hookup and they put five hundred thousand in. So I would like to see either in person or at least court, or written quarter. Want to know if we all get any questions about where is it, where is it? I don't know enough to answer.
Put that in the motion.
All right, so moved.
I'll second it, because I had the same complaints. And didn't they tell us that they're probably going to have some connections here in fourth quarter? End of fourth quarter now?
I think it was end of fourth quarter. I remember that correctly. I'd have to go back and.
Yeah, I don't know if it's at the end of it or what, but I know it was the fourth quarter.
Was it calendar quarter or fiscal year quarter?
Didn't say.
That's what I know.
Didn't say.
You gotta find, gotta nail them down.
All right, wait a minute, I got a motion on the floor. Got a motion to second. Any other discussion on that? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, any other discussion on All Points?
No.
Tadlock, you got anything else you want to comment on? Mr. Basie, you have anything? All right. Yeah?
All right. Just want to update the board on the Christmas event. Like I had stated previously, we're going to team up Rice's Hotel and Hewitt's Tavern folks. And the event's going to take place December the third. Inspector's going to be working on a flyer. This is the old flyer, but this is what's going to be going out, be advertised with updated information on it. So we're gonna, like I said, tag team with them and have this Golden Village Christmas. So it's going to start at nine AM in the morning. It's going to be a gift shop open for children to come and buy gifts for their parents and family for four dollars. At ten AM, the, the Golden Village Christmas officially is going to take place. We're going to have gift shopping inside the tavern on the green. We have bake sale, fresh green rearrangements and all of that for sale. They're going to have the antique car cruise in. They're going to have lunch at the tavern. Going to be, have a visit from the mobile library. They're going to have a blacksmith shop opened up, different woodworkers here, carriage horses, quilters, all of that. Again, like I said, the children's gift shop is going to be open. At eleven, from eleven AM to one PM, it's going to be a visit with Santa in the tavern carriage house. At twelve-thirty to three-thirty, not on site, I think it's going to be offsite at the Roanoke Farm. It's going to be an Oyster roast sponsored by the St. Stevens Episcopal Church. Starting back here at four PM, we're going to start our celebration here. We're going to have some welcome comments. We're going to have some, some Christmas curls. Hopefully, that, that's why I was asking the school to provide the band or some students that are willing to sing some Christmas curls. We're going to have a reading of the Christmas story. Hopefully, we're going to have a visit with Santa again on sleigh. And if we can make the arrangements, we're going to have a couple of fire pits and some hot chocolate and apple cider and some cookies for folks. Ending with a lighting of a tree out front, and that'll be right around five PM. Another thing that we're going to work on is we're going to encourage the landlords here, homeowners here in the Heathfield vicinity around the Old Cortez area, right through town, in the businesses, to help promote Christmas by decorating a little more and getting some lights up and some decorations. So this is, this is the route that we're going. It's subject to change a little bit. We're going to be asking, once we get flyers, anyone from any churches that want to come and participate in any kind of way, whether it's helping decorate, work some of the events, be a part of the choir singing or what have you. We're going to bring them all in.
How about the Oyster roast? I know that's not free, I think.
No.
No.
Well, you know the price.
No, we don't, we don't, we really don't have anything to do with that, but we wanted to put it on the agenda so people would know it when they, when they advertise.
And they were for twenty to fifty dollars.
I know I tend to pass, I don't.
And probably more on the fifty dollar side.
Yeah, well, it's worth, it's worth it though.
It's a fundraiser for them now. I'm not saying that, but.
And I got one last thing, and this has been an ongoing thing. But we need to move forward with this radio system.
Amen, I was going to just regret it myself.
You know, we were concerned with what Lancaster was going to be doing, and they're moving forward, we need to move forward. It's discouraging to, to sit home or to have your pager on, your radio on, and the dispatches telling EMS or the deputies to call in to the sheriff's office because they can't hear them, it's too much static. And, you know, we, we just need to move forward, you know? We've looked at the financing, and I made a motion and it was voted on and approved back August of twenty-one. So look at the financing and then move forward. And we really need to move forward. We need to at least look at the contract, have the contract looked at through Harris, have the attorney look at it, or have federal look at it. I don't care, but we need to move forward.
What do we need to move forward? Not the financing piece, but the other piece to get to that point. From above, from a county point, and also anything Mr. Gregory needs to add in regarding that.
From, from our standpoint, as far as the, the financing, we need to figure out, one, the, the contract with Harris State, the final figures on, on that equipment. There's also the microwave equipment side of things. Sheriff Beecham has gotten that information to the board. We've shared that information. I think it's a matter of coming up with a final figure, finalizing the, looking at the contract and having that before the board to, to review. I would rely on Mr. Gregory to, as far as any legal aspect of, of that contract. But I, I think that would be the, the next steps, to figure out exactly what it is that we're looking at as far as cost.
How mu, how much of that could Jay have read about at the next meeting?
I think we, we have pretty much all of the figures at this point. It's just a matter of compiling those figures for the board.
The only question, Sheriff, assuming, we've got to assume Lancaster County doesn't go in for purposes of moving forward. What if they do come in, are we going to get the benefit if they come in? Where, where do they come in versus where we're moving forward types of?
So the difference is the Good Luck Road Tower.
Yeah.
We're absorbing that if we go by ourselves. If they join with us either now or come in later, now's the better time because we don't have to negotiate with them.
Yeah.
If they come in later, the regional system could probably mandate that they use that tower. And then there's going to be, or should be, a negotiation between Lancaster and Northumberland, of how much they're going to pay back, or pay Northumberland, whether it's half or three quarters, whatever you guys decide. That's my understanding of, of the difference.
I agree with Jimmy. I like to move forward.
Right.
I was, not approached, but commented to by a deputy, he could not get any backup and he was assaulted five times because of radio. I do not want that to happen, and I'm ready to move. So we can have something ready next month, but I want to include the option of Lancaster coming, what it, what it does for us in terms of financial benefit.
Well, Sheriff, how is Lancaster? Have you talked to them recently?
Yeah, we just heard tonight that they approved to hire federal to look at the proposal like, like we did and to negotiate the contract with L three Harris. I'll mention, just this week, we had a call with EMS in Maryland Bay on altered mental status.
Yeah, I heard that.
They could not get in by radio, and the person had, didn't have a weapon, but had ammunition and a magazine, a speed loader. And, you know, that kind of made them nervy, and they couldn't get in. They had called by cellphone. So it's.
I understand.
We got to go.
So if, if all possible, have everything straight for us to consider next month.
Right, that's what I was thinking.
And Luttrell, we can finalize those figures within next week or two.
Okay, yeah, we'll, we'll get together and we'll show both options for the board.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we got a plan to go ahead, but then plan it likes to come then, what's, how we can be best covered for that contingency too.
Okay.
All right. That's all.
That's it?
All right. Now, our next item would be, we need to convene into a closed meeting.
You want to do that after our public hearing and public comment?
We could do that after, if that's all right with the board.
Don't let the pub, don't make the public sit here any longer.
Next item on the agenda is the public comment period. Anyone like to speak tonight?
Maurice Johnson, live in Reedville. I'm a repeat offender here. I just have a couple of points.
You got a sheriff fact, but don't say that.
First, I'd like to address the fact that North, talk about Northumberland County. Quite often, we hear one or more of y'all. Differ, I guess that's the right word, to whatever Lancaster or Westmoreland has done, and this is part of the decision-making process, from what I can observe, but this is Northumberland County, complete with its own demographics, industry footprint, geographic, and a myriad of other needs. Not necessarily sharing context with other counties within the region. In deferring to other counties, we invite a greater opportunity for negative outcomes. The implicit assumption that what's good for neighboring counties is good for Northumberland counties is flawed on its face. In these cases, it's sometimes difficult to avoid the impression that the Board of Supervisors is not necessarily up to an arbitrarily chosen task, but this is to be expected. Not everybody has a crystal ball and not everything has been around for years and years. In deferring to other counties, I'm sorry, however, where there may be value in understanding why another county would make its decisions, special consideration and more focused consideration needs to be given to those unique particulars of Northumberland County, in particular, the residents and the property owners. Which brings me to the next point. Minor variations in land use are usually absorbed pretty good within the community. Most of the time, stuff is, it doesn't, it doesn't last forever, you know? The person requesting a variation, they're not going to be around forever, they're not going to be on that property forever, that kind of thing. However, there are times and cases that we've seen recently where deviation in permitted land use have strong and lasting implications. Impacts can span multiple generations. Example, I'm baking this one up. Where an applicant's request is best suited, for example, in an M1 type of zoning, but the applicant is seeking it for a property that is not anywhere near M1 zoning. This is obvious, a case where it could be a bridge too far. We don't want to necessarily deal with that, that has some pretty bad implications. One of which is if you do that once or a couple of times, pretty much after a while, you've got a trend going, and it can weaken your zoning laws. If not, in the worst case, it can make them functionally unenforceable. And we don't want to see that. So, I want to point out, though, that the Board of Supervisors carries a serious burden. And your decisions reach well beyond the districts that each of you represents. It impacts the entire county, not just today, but well into the future. So, your burden is pretty strong. And we out here on this side of the partition want to hold on to the idea that you guys have the wisdom and the conscience to tell the difference when it's a bridge too far or it's just regular stuff. That's the end of it, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else like to speak?
Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you for taking a minute to listen to me, I'm Jane Blue, Library Director here in Northumberland County. And actually, tonight, I'm here wearing a hat for Yield Bookshop and for the building 7202, Northumberland Highway, which has a number of tenants and the owner, Jake Baer. Since he lives in Alexandria, he could not be here, and he asked me to please come and speak on behalf of the people who are in that building. Twice now this year, January 2nd and September 12th, we have experienced the unfortunate results of someone driving around the bend on 360 too fast and slamming into the wall in that building. It's my understanding that this is not the first time that that has occurred, and we don't think it will be the last unless we are more proactive on how we're going to handle that curve and the traffic. It's an ongoing problem. And I know at one time, when they did a traffic study, that resulted in the yellow arrows that are now on that corner. But that's not solving the problem. Drivers take that corner way too fast. On many occasions, in the middle of the day, I will walk to the post office, I will walk up to the bookstore, I will walk over to Subway and get lunch, and people fly on that road. They never adhere to the 25 mile an hour speed limit, at least not that I have seen. And I myself am guilty of going 28, 29, 30, until I get right up there, that corner, and then I hit the gap, I hit the brake. But since there's no sidewalk on one side, you have to cross the road to get to the sidewalk on the other side, and then you have to cross the road again to get back to the sidewalk on the side where the bookstore is and where the post office is. So, when people are flying up around that corner, it's pretty dangerous to cross that road. Now, there is a crosswalk right there in front of Subway and in front of the bookstore. So, that's great. If people slow down, I actually had somebody stop for me the other day, so I was able to walk across that crosswalk. But people don't usually do that, and there's no crosswalk in front of the library across the street to the sidewalk. The first request we have is that you ask VDOT to do a traffic study from the library up around that corner and try to determine how we can make that better and safer so we don't have people flying through that intersection and slamming into the sidewall of the bookstore. If there is a traffic study done, we are confident that we will see that people are not adhering to the speed limit. Next, what do we do? Do we put rumble strips? Do we put a three-way stop? Do we put a light? I know, heaven forbid, we put another light in Northumberland County. I was here when they put the one in Burgess. Believe you me, I heard about it for a really long time. So, I understand that change is very hard. But if I have to be called at 3 o'clock in the morning, again, what if it's a fatality this time? What happens if there's somebody sitting in my reading room area in the bookstore instead of it being 3:00 in the morning? And we are no longer looking at just a crash, we're looking at deaths. I'm not willing to see that happen in this county, and I hope that you're not either. So, I hope that you will consider asking VDOT to do a traffic study to see what we can do to slow the traffic down around that corner, and could we please put a walkway between the library across the street to the sidewalk so that people can safely walk across the street there? Thank you for your consideration, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Check on that.
Yeah, I'd move that we ask VDOT to do a traffic study. If they've done it before, they're probably going to do, say, the same 85 percentile, but it might give some basis. Now, the one thing they could do is, at least when you cross Northumberland Highway, cross Courthouse Road, if there's a crosswalk there, they need to put those signs yield to pedestrians like they have in other places.
Right.
But they still don't have sidewalks to get to.
Might be a good crosswalk there at the library.
But then they can still do the signage, you know, you've got to yield to that, which a lot of people don't do, I understand that, but-
I know it's 25 miles per hour now, but it's hard to get people to slow down. Sheriff Peacham, you have any suggestions on that? Besides put someone there writing tickets?
Yeah, that's what they got to do.
This is in your county seat where your office is.
That's what we do, is write tickets. I mean, if I can put somebody there 24 hours a day and we'll solve the problem. But I don't have somebody there 24. We can step up enforcement
Right.
through the busy times, you know, when we know the library is open, if people are walking back and forth through town, we can step up enforcement, no problem. Just don't expect a whole lot of difference because I'm short-staffed. But regardless of that, we'll step it up and see what we can do.
But that's why I didn't call, I knew that you were short-staffed, and I know that we look, you've put the speed things out before, and we watch, but when those are out, people slow down. When they see the police, they slow down. That's not where the problem is.
Well, one thing we can look at is buying an additional speed sign, like the one we have in Reedville, and put it in Heathville and move it around some.
Or you can also park one of your vehicles not in use right there, parking that way.
Well, unfortunately, I don't have one of those either.
I know.
But you give a couple of tickets, the word's going to get out.
Absolutely.
If we put a crosswalk there, you're going to see a difference.
But I think the idea she has are all good ideas.
Well, the other thing you can do, this is take the landlord to do it, is if they're going to have to check their legal liability, putting something proactive out to stop them from running into it, like you see some stores putting a 6x6 or an 8x6, that, they could put a nice big rock. They won't go in the building, but they're going to hit that rock and it won't go for them. But they got to check sure their legal liability about that, too.
Part of it is the parking there, though.
I know.
The less parking we have for people, too, and our tenants have to go there as well.
You look at the convenience store up in Calio, 6x6 or 8x8 there. For that reason, people going forward and running into the building.
Right.
Yeah. Right.
Well, that's what you have to do, you have to put something to stop it.
Yeah.
Mr. Tadlock, can you contact Mr. Beal with that?
Yeah, I think.
Mr. Tom. Yeah, I made it as a motion.
All right, you got a motion on that?
Second.
All right, we got a motion, a second, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
Sorry, I didn't catch your motion.
Back to the problem.
All right, anyone else like to speak? Anyone else like to speak? All right, do we have anybody in the virtual world tonight that would like to speak? Is anybody on? Anybody in the virtual world like to comment tonight? All right, anybody in the virtual world, would they like to comment on any item tonight? Anyone? All right. Well, I'll close the public comment period. Well, it's a little bit past 7 o'clock, but we'll start on our public hearings tonight. Our first applicant was a request by Philip Haney, and that has been carried over until our November the 10th meeting. All right. Our second one is a revision to the Northumberland County zoning ordinance to allow administrative zoning of chickens and livestock, and Mr. McKenzie?
Yes. Per the Board's supervisor request from July 14, 2022, the Planning Commission revised, proposed a revision to the Northumberland County ordinance to basically allow administrator approval for chickens and/or livestock within residential general R1 district, zoning district, provided they meet certain conditions. So, that's one thing. The other thing is that if the applicants do not meet those set conditions, which we, same as R2, which we did last year, then they, then it could be considered for a conditional use. So, there's two things going on. We're going to allow administrator approval for certain conditions, which I'll be glad to read if you'd like me to. And then if it's, the number of animals are larger than what the administrator approval requires, or it's a strange species, or the acreage isn't enough, then it would be a conditional approval, it would go to the Board of Supervisors. The Planning Commission voted to recommend approval for you all to consider this unanimously. If you'd like me to read the actual language, I'd be glad to.
Yes, please.
Okay. Revision to the Northumberland County zoning ordinance for the residential R1 zoning district allows zoning administrator approval of up to 12 chickens per 2 acres of land in residential general R1, provided the applicant meets these minimum requirements. Chickens must be fenced inside an enclosure outside of the Chesapeake Bay Resource Protection Area to keep them under control and protected from predators. No roosters allowed. Waste must be cleaned up weekly and disposed of in environmentally sound fashion. Prohibition, prohibition of disposing of waste in waterways and within the Chesapeake RPA. Deceased chicken disposal must be addressed. Chicken coops must be set back from the neighboring property line at least 25 feet. Fencing must set back from the property lines at least 10 feet. These are all measures to hopefully reduce conflicts between neighbors. That is the requirements for chickens. The administrator approval for up to one livestock per 5 acres of land in residential general R1, provided the applicant meets these minimum requirements, which is very similar, basically the same as the other ones. Animals must be fenced inside the enclosure outside the Chesapeake Bay Resource Protection Area to keep under control and protected from predators. Waste must be cleaned up weekly and disposed of, and is prohibited from disposing in waterways and within the Chesapeake Bay RPA. Applicant must outline disposal method in case of diseased livestock. Animal housing structures must be set back from the neighboring property line at least 25 feet, and fencing must be set back from the property lines at least 10 feet. So, any request to allow animals in the residential general zoning district R1 that do not conform to the above parameters will go before the Board of Supervisors for a conditional use permit. There were two public comments. Ms. Pam Peggy didn't like that we were excluding roosters, and I tried to explain to her that you couldn't have animals at all before we make this change, and so we're actually making it easier for them. And then Ms. Jane Williams commented, and I think that's in your board docs, that the, she got requirements for miniature horses, and they need, from what her information said, not even an acre, like a half an acre, a third of an acre, so miniature horses. She wanted to get those, and she's in R1, and she thought that that the 5 acres for livestock was a little bit too high. But those are the only two comments that I have received.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
All right, any board members have any comments?
I have a question, Quinn. Does this wording reflect, break what's in R2 now?
It's exactly the same.
Okay.
And that helps with consistency for the citizens and for the zoning administrator.
Okay, good.
The rules are the same. Yes.
I got two questions.
All right.
What kind of permit, do they get a zoning permit for this if it's done administratively?
Yes.
And R1 is generally denser areas, like Chesapeake Beach, Fleeton Beach, and things like that.
That's R3, sir.
R3, excuse me.
Right, so R1, it's more in the interior. We left the Chesapeake Bay Resource Protection Area because there could be some perennial streams in there, but it's just basically for R1, which is kind of in the interior residential sections.
But it's a denser population than R2, or?
Yes, it is.
That's why roosters might not be-
Smaller, smaller parcels.
Might not be appreciated.
It wouldn't be appreciated, you're right. All right, anyone else have any comments here before I open the public hearing? No other comments? All right. Well, I'll open the public hearing on this, would anybody like to speak on this? Anyone like to speak on this? Anyone want to speak about the chickens? How many roosters we going to have? All right. Anybody in the virtual world like to comment? Got anybody, Morgan? Anybody in the virtual world like to comment on this zoning ordinance about chickens and livestock? Nobody? I ask one more time. Anybody in the virtual world like to comment? Nothing. All right. I will close the public hearing, and the matter is before the board now.
I move that we accept this change to the ordinance.
Second. All right, we got a motion and a second, is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. That's all our, that's all our public hearings right now. Now, we can ask for, let's see, we need to- Now we can ask for, uh, let's see, we need to convene into, into a closed meeting.
You need that motion, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, we need to.
Um, need a motion that the Northumberland County Board of Supervisors convene into closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Section 2.23711A1 for the discussion and consideration of personnel matters. Right to attend the closed meeting as necessary of the county administrator, assistant county administrator, county attorney, because they are deemed necessary and their presence will reasonably aid the board in its consideration of the topics to be discussed pursuant to Virginia 40, Section 2.23712P.
I move what Mr. Tadlock said.
All right, I have a second. I got a motion and a second. All right, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're going into the next room and have a closed meeting. Welcome to state.
Thank you all for coming.
All right, motion, second. You got anything to read on that, Lusick?
Yes, sir, well, come out of closed and then I've got the certification.
All right, motion, second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I need a motion that the Northumberland Board of Supervisors return a public meeting and certify by roll call vote that only public business managers lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by the Freedom of Information Act and as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Second. All right, now we need a roll call vote.
All right.
All right.
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Or do you want me to call out these names? All right, Ms. Blough?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Ronnie?
I already did one, uh.
All right, we got it. We're, we're covered. Just keep records straight. All right, anything else we got?
Uh, just action on the one employee for the wastewater operator maintenance position.
It was a pleasure to board.
I move we hire the person.
All right, got a second?
Second.
Got a motion, a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anything else?
Would you say he could start?
Uh, his effective date was 10/24.
10/24, that's not far away.
I think.
All right, anything else? Are we, are we going to offer that to Wes or what?
We're, we're waiting to hear that.
Do we have time?
I, I think so.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we continue over for the possibility of.
All right.
Some things that might come up if not being closed next month.
Uh, actually we've got the, uh, joint meeting with the school board.
All right, when is that? What, what?
What day is that?
Is it the 2nd?
That's the 12th.
What day is that? Let's see, I'll pull it up. Do you summon?
No.
November. November. Just don't remember which day it was.
November 2nd. It was November 2nd.
Yep. All right, I move.
That's right.
I move that we continue our meeting to November the 2nd at 5:30.
That's right. All right. Jimmy, second, that's, all right, we got a motion, a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank everybody for coming.